Okay, good morning, everybody. It's July the 9th, 2024. It's about 9:11. Regular meeting in Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. Call the meeting to order. Lee, if you would, let's have our pledges. And Sheriff, can you give us a little prayer this morning, please?
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Frankly, please. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this morning, Lord, thanking you for the many blessings that you've given us. For a lot of us have just gone through some tough times with a storm, and, Lord, I just pray that you be with the families that were affected. Lord, as far as I know, there was no loss of life, but there was a lot of loss of property. And, Lord, just be with those people and help us around. Let them seek help, Lord, and let us all unite and help one another. Lord, I want to thank you for the ability that commissioners, the judge have, that they dedicate themselves to do the work for the county. I ask that you be with them as we go through this agenda this morning, Lord, and that you bless them and you give them the wisdom, Lord, that's needed to take care of the people and the business here in Liberty County. Lord, I want to thank you for all the county employees. I want to thank you for all elected officials, Lord. I just want to thank you for being able to get up in the morning and get after it another day, Lord. And, Lord, bless us. Help us to keep our eyes on you in heaven and do the things that you would have us do. Please forgive us when we fall short. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. And again, thanks to all the first responders that were out in Commissioners. Y'all, thank y'all. It wasn't easy. Once again, this is another one of those storms that none of them are like, and this definitely was not like any one we've had previous. But mostly a wind event, and it gave us a whole new respect for a category one hurricane. I'm gonna tell you that right now. My first hurricane was Hurricane Carla. Some of y'all were not alive then, but Sheriff was, Commissioner Arthur was, I'm pretty sure. It taught us a good lesson.
Me, big boy.
Yeah, I think Leon was around too. Yeah.
I was.
It was, it was pretty rough, but that was the first one I ever witnessed, and I'm sure, good Lord willing, I'll get to witness a whole bunch more. The, but again, to all the first responders, thank you for your, for your help. Fire departments, Sheriff's Office, Constable's Office, game wardens, DPS. We all met on a Saturday and Sunday at the EOC and at the Sheriff's Office, and everybody got the coordinations down. Everybody followed the plan, and as Greg knows and as Sheriff mentioned, I don't think we had any loss of life, although there was a lot of loss of property. So again, thank you, Lord, for your blessings. Notices and proclamations. I don't see any today.
Can I make one little notice?
Yes, ma'am, please.
For all the elected officials in the room and listening out there, campaign finance reports are due by the 15th. It covers through the end of June 2024.
Great.
Bring them to my office.
Even if you don't have anything to claim, you start to turn in one.
Because right now, the law is we have to post them on the internet, so people are gonna be looking to see that you turn your paperwork in. And, I mean, even if it's full of zeros like mine, turn it in so that they can see that you're doing your paperwork on a timely basis and, you know, following the law in that regard. So please, yes, please get them in before the end of the week.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Public comment. Dee Dee, I didn't have anybody sign up this morning, so, okay. Declare conflicts of interest. Anybody? Okay. Let the record show, Commissioner Wilson's with us by way of Zoom. Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur are here present. Commissioner Whitmire is taking care of his mother this morning. She's 93, and God bless her. He still has a mother to take care of, and I do respect that. Consent agenda. Let's move on into that. Does anyone, everybody had the opportunity to look it over? Dwayne, we have no add-ons today. Kim, we have no add-ons as well. Okay?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's an aye from Leon. That's all three. Okay. That motion carries. Move on to the regular agenda. Number 8.1 from Commissioner Korbowski. Consider and approve amending the county employee handbook to include a policy to prohibit the use of cigarettes, e-cigs, and vaping in any and all county facilities. Okay, I'll just open it up for discussion, y'all.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, save the motion.
All right. Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please. That's an aye, Leon? Pretty sure that was an aye.
Yes.
All right.
It is an aye.
Gotcha. Thank you. Number 8.2 from Commissioner Korbowski. Consider and approve adopting a countywide policy prohibiting the use of county law enforcement vehicles for being operated or used for transporting law enforcement officers to security, contract, and traffic control jobs outside of Liberty County. And I believe we've had some discussions.
Yeah, between the last time this was on the agenda and this time, we did not have any kind of meeting with the constables in the Sheriff's Department. I'm gonna go ahead and table this and urge that we have a discussion on this and a workshop.
Good word. Thank you.
If I may add, Commissioner Korbowski, there is a different county general policy issue.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to table.
I second that. We got too many unanswered questions right now.
Yeah. Okay. Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's an aye from Leon as well. Nays, hearing none. That motion does carry. We will table this. Next one's from me. Consider and approve the reappointments of Ms. Patty Atkins and Reverend Carl Williamson to the Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare Board of Trustees, each for a term of two years. Their current term will expire August 31st, 2024, so this will extend them through 2026. And we have talked to them, and they are willing to keep serving, and I appreciate your consideration. Got a motion from Leon to approve. Greg, was that a second?
Yes.
Got a second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.4, consider and approve payment to Southeast Texas Flood Control District for initial funding dues based on the 2020 county population. And we are still a member of this group, and they have measuring devices in our county. So that's why I'm asking that we can keep working with these, this group. It is coming together quite well. It, of course, we have our own study and plan and process for the entire county, and it should be completed within the year to 18 months. We're also members of the Cedar Bow Initiative, which is Harris County, Liberty County, and Chambers County. So we've got three groups working toward this flood business. And the Cedar Bow Initiative kind of started off with a bang. It slowed down with some changes in leadership in Harris County, but I believe it's back on track now. But one of the reasons that it is back on track is that Phillips Petroleum has a plant that is in direct path of the Cedar Bow portion, and during Harvey, they lost about 180 days of producing, and I don't think they want to have that happen again. So I believe we're back on track, but I appreciate your consideration of approving this, and we'll consider that we're still a member.
I take it this, I take it payment is $5,358?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Leon. Number 8.5 from our tax attorneys over at Lime Barker. Consider and approve the following resale tax bids. C. Alexander, property ID number 13712, for $2,500. And item number two was Jay Stewart, property ID 28591, for $3,000. That's all we have on the list for today, y'all.
Make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Motion from Bruce to approve, second from Leon. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, sir. Number six from Ms. Harris over at the County Treasurer's Office. Consider and take action on increase to current longevity pay rates for all eligible Liberty County employees, starting with payments to be made in November of 2024. Kim, you have anything you want to add to it? Oh, you got a microphone right there. You need to, you need to aim it to you. No, you got to aim it, aim it at you. There you go.
Okay. I sent out to you all option A and option B. Leon had asked for some possibilities for what we might do to increase the longevity pay on the last Commissioners Court. So option A would be to add $20 per each year of service for employees. Option B would be to add $25 per year of service to each employee's amount. And the current policy, the overall total, is approximately $199,300. Option A with the $20 addition would be $246,740, which is an overall budget increase of $47,440 approximately. And option B is $258,600, which is an overall budget increase of $59,300. You know, we could do any, any option, any other option, or, or not do it, whatever the court's pleasure is, but these are approximations of what would happen under these two scenarios.
If you would push your button on your microphone.
Kim, I'm sorry. You asked me about this a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't even think about this. But I think if they did increase the longevity pay since with the county, and I'm sorry again, you asked me, and I just didn't think about this. The date that they're getting paid for is last December 31st. That's when they
Right, so it'll be, December 31st will be paid this November of 2024. So it's the years of service through December 31st of 2023 will be paid in November of 2024. So it's next year's budget cycle.
Excuse me. I'll turn off my So you're talking about what you want.
Right, that's why I have it on so early.
Well, I just want to make sure that the money we're giving them, it can't be earned in the prior year because we're going back. Are you agreeing with me, Kathy?
I see what you're saying.
The money's already, the time, they already earned the longevity pay in last year, and so I don't think we can increase it until the next earnings cycle.
So I think what Dwayne is saying is that if we, we would need to budget it in for November of 2025. Yes, to be paid for the, you know, what's in there.
December 31st, 2024.
Yes, exactly. And that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Everybody clear? Evident or not.
What I got, we'll budget it for this next coming year, but it won't be paid until the end of the next year for this year.
Correct.
So do you want option A or option B? That's what we're looking.
Yeah.
Leon?
I make the option budgeted.
Option B.
B is in wait.
Okay, got a motion, Leon, to choose option B.
I'll stick it.
Okay. Second from Greg. Is there any further discussion?
Judge, the agenda item would need to be adjusted to say with payments to be made in November of 2025.
Lee, you got that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.7 from Ms. Chambers. Consider and approve implementation of an emergency notice system for Liberty County, either for all county offices or just for elections. Both proposals from text mygov are attached in the packet. Y'all had the opportunity to look at these. These are a pretty good idea.
Yeah, we had looked at it before, and we had discussed maybe doing a workshop on it, but we really, really missed having something like this in May, especially when we were closing voting locations because they were flooding. And with this one coming up here, it came on so quickly, being able to get information out to the public, that this system just instantly puts out information. And yesterday, being here in Liberty, because the city of Liberty uses it, I knew where the electricity was out. I knew where the crews were working. You know, they were sending out information all day about what neighborhoods were down. You know, it's just helpful to the public to know what we're doing and how we're handling it, letting them know where the SBA is so they can sign up. I mean, we can put stuff on Facebook and the website, but this reaches more people. It reaches the public. It gets the information out instantaneously. And this may not be our last emergency this year, so I'm not, we've got to make decisions on who's gonna run it, admin it, all of that, and I think we can all get together, Office of Emergency Management, all of us, and figure that out. But I'm asking you to consider putting in this kind of a notice system for the county so that we can handle these emergencies and get the information out to the public quicker.
So I have one option that is $14,000. For the first year is $21,000, then $14,000 renewing annually, and the other one is at $7,000.
The $7,000 would be just if we used it for elections only. The $14,000 is all year for all county offices. So you guys could use it to tell people that you've got a road closed. We could use it to tell people that we've got an emergency coming. We could use it to tell people that because of a fire, we've had to move a voting location. We could use it for any number of scenarios that I can think of. But the $7,000 one is just for my office. The other one is for the every county office in the county to be able to utilize and send out notices.
We really need it. We really need it.
Nick, you got anything you want to throw in on it?
I think we're gonna have to sit down and kind of figure that out, but I know that when we talked before, when Bill and I, all of us talked about it before, we've talked about having multiple people in offices responsible. So I can help coordinate that and set that up. It's, you know, it's kind of like how we do public stuff. We use, different offices get involved. I mean, I think emergency management should definitely be sending out the emergency notices. If you want to send out notices like road closures and this and that, you can get with my office or their office, and we can send it out. We'll figure it out. We'll make it work. We'll, we'll come up with a designated contact and a backup, and we'll figure it out.
Okay. Leon, you got anything you want to add?
Sounds good to me, Jake.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we approve the countywide option.
Motion from Greg to approve the countywide option. Looking for a second. Got a second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. From number eight from Ms. Soliday over at the Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve amendment to number five to GLO contract number 20-066-013-C095. This amendment is an extension of time for the housing buyout program to February 28, 2025. Due to our recent flooding, some of the homes have been inaccessible to the contractors to complete the demolition by the original completion date of June 30th, 2024. With court approval, I will sign the extension forms, and that's, yes, it's necessary. We still have these to take care of. And yes, we did flood in May extensively and in June, and I would like to see this, this completed. And if there's opportunity for a second round of buyouts, I'd sure like to see that as well. Melinda, you have anything else you want to add?
No, that pretty much sums it up. We, you know, due to all the flooding that we had, there was no way the contractors that had won the second round of bidding on the homes for the demos could even get to some of the homes. And still, some of them are inaccessible.
Right.
Too close to the river, the heavy equipment can't get by on the temporary roads.
You know, on these homes, it, it might be added that, they don't just demo these, they demo and haul them off.
Yes. They carry all of the, everything off. They grade the lot, and it's, it's just left as green space.
Yep.
Mainly for the destruction of houses. Are they gonna extend the my period a little?
I'm not sure if they're gonna extend it, but I am looking into it because I still have a lot of people that are interested in the my.
Yeah.
Especially since this last flooding.
Anyway, I move to approve this.
Well, Leon, was that a motion, Leon?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Leon. Need a second. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.9 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Schaumburg &amp; Polk Incorporated invoice number 12901.00-10, dated June the 10th, 2024, in the amount of $6,500. This is for the city of Ames sanitary sewer improvements using ARPA funding. Note that again, using ARPA funding.
Correct.
The invoice has been signed by Mayor Domine, and all we need to do is approve this. We can get these folks paid.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon. Was that a second, Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion from Leon. Thank you from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.10, Permits and Inspections, again from Ms. Soliday. This over in Commissioner Arthur's neck of the woods. Consider and approve the replat at Whitner Estates. The letter of recommendation from LJ Engineering is attached in the packet as we do request this. Greg, what's your thoughts on it?
I'm gonna refer.
Motion, okay? That's motion from Greg to approve.
Basically, it's just one lot broke into two.
Yeah. Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.11 from Ms. Soliday and also Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve the application packet for Bahia Pipeline LLC. This will be a 30-inch buried carbon steel NGL pipeline. Attached in the packet is a permit application packet with all the information and road crossings being requested. Note that this pipeline will run through precincts two and three in Liberty County. Bruce, you have anything you want to discuss about this?
I do. I'm, we table it right now, but I don't know how deep they're gonna, they're gonna run these things underneath the underneath the road, whether it's gonna interfere with our drainage. I would like LJ to look at that.
Well, and I think that's perfectly acceptable, Commissioner Arthur. Both items 11 and 12 kind of go together, and I do have a representative here. There should be an executive session on this agenda, if you'd like to go into that.
I prefer that we have Commissioner Whitmire present as well.
Okay, perfect. Not a problem, but there is a representative here, so if you have any questions, follow me and take advantage.
Yeah, I would like to visit with them.
Absolutely. We can make that happen.
We've had problems in the past with, not deep enough where we can maintain our drainage there. And we just want to look at that. Other than that, I'm
I believe there should be
Please, please.
Jeff Aldo with, we have pipeline. There should be in the packet, a plan and profile.
Come on up again, Jeff, and reintroduce yourself, please.
Jeff Aldo with Enterprise Products, the pipeline. And in the packet, I apologize because of the storm. I've not had an opportunity to review from what was initially submitted. But there should be a plan and profile that will show the depth of cover. I guess one
Do you have?
Yes, ma'am. And so we're proposing at this point a minimum of five feet of cover. This, right here, this is the plan view, and this is the profile view. So what, what it shows here is a minimum depth of cover, and I understand that from the lowest part of the bar ditch, we're proposing five foot minimum cover. That's what this drawing is showing right here.
Okay.
I'd like to look at that on the ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you prefer me to make an appointment with you, and we can go through these together? Okay, I can, you may be a little busy this week, but when, when would you like to meet?
Well, we can, we can meet this week.
Okay.
Sooner we can get down to the back.
Okay, I'll be happy to give you a call.
Leon, you have a question?
Yeah, I'll make the motion table this until we get David available.
I'll concur. Okay, we got a motion from Leon to table.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you, gentlemen. That's what we need to do. Number 8.12 from County Attorney, Mr. Poston, and Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Bahia Pipeline LLC for the use of county roads in multiple precincts in Liberty County. Text in exchange for prepaid damages in the amount of $500,000. And y'all want to also table this as well?
Yes. Yeah. I make the motion table.
Okay, got a motion from Leon, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along. Number 8.13 from Ms. Harris over at the County Treasurer's Office. Consider and take action on the status of COVID pay for Liberty County employees. Now, it's been going on for how many years now? About four? About four years, Kim?
Yes, sir.
And unfortunately, we've had people come back, and they've, I know we've had, how many? Seven or eight over in the Sheriff's Office that have had COVID again. You have one.
Yeah.
Harold has it now.
I'm pretty sure I had it. I just didn't realize it until late. But, but I don't get But, but I don't get COVID pay, so there. Just letting you know. We don't, we don't have overtime or COVID pay. We just have all the time. Right. It's elected, guys. What do y'all want to do on this? Because it doesn't, it seems to be like it's not ever going to go away. But yet.
I mean, we have sick leave, so I don't know that we need that anymore.
We do. In fairness to employees, I just want to consider that as well.
This is no, no more serious than pneumonia anymore. We don't address the pneumonia. I don't see why we need to continue to address COVID.
Yeah. Leon?
Well, I don't, I don't see a policy in place. I don't see a penalizing our employees. We got out in the public, working, and could have possibly picked the COVID. COVID has killed many, many people. And. So I, I, I think we need to stick with the policy and move forward.
Well, I would like Commissioner Whitmire to weigh in on this as well. And I hate to keep tabling things, but this does, I would say requires his, his input to be fair to his employees as well.
Exactly. Just I make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion from Leon to table, second from Bruce. We'll bring this back up shortly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, fourteen, from Mr. C, who has COVID. God bless him. Consider and approve or reject RFP number twenty-four oh nine, Disaster Monitoring Services and Consulting advertise for new proposals if it is rejected. I think time is of the fact.
Well, I was on the meeting with Harold Stephanie on this, and we had a few more that had come in, had come in late. Their, Harold is suggesting that we reject this and go out for new. We have plenty of time on this because this is on the new contract and not the one that we have now. So I'm making a motion to reject this and go back out for bids.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to reject and go back out for RFPs. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion does pass. Number eight, fifteen from Ms. Harris over the County Treasurer's Office. Consider and approve resolution to adopt Liberty County investment policy and to appoint an investment officer. Kim, you have anything you want to add to that?
And this is just our standard review of the investment policy. There were many major changes to it at this time. And we just have a resolution for the court to sign that approves the investment policy and appoints the Liberty County Treasurer as the investment officer.
Catherine, you have anything you need to add?
No, no, Judge.
All right, what's say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Got a second from Greg. Any further discussion? Leon, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Call for vote. All in favor say aye. Motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, after doing a little bit of research and speaking with both Dwayne and Ms. Harris, we would like to revisit item number six regarding the longevity pay policy.
So which one?
Six.
Item, item number six, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, after we had our initial discussion regarding retroactive pay, I did a little additional research and I located an attorney general opinion that says longevity pay is not, in fact, retroactive pay. In fact, it says, and I'll read it. It says, "In the context of Article Three, Section fifty-three, it is not payment for an employee's past service, but instead payment for current services provided while recognizing a person's enhanced value to his or her employer because of the person's many years of experience and knowledge."
Okay.
And as approved, you approved for the option B to go into effect of November twenty-five. It would not constitute retroactive pay if paid in November twenty-four. And I just felt like that was important enough to let the court know.
So any changes in the, in the motion?
Right. If you so choose.
The motion, as it sits, has November twenty twenty-five. You want to have a new motion to change that to November twenty twenty-four?
If, if the court chooses.
Could we just amend that?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Leon made the motion and Greg made the second. Leon, you want to make that change?
Yeah, I make the motion that we go ahead and approve this.
For twenty twenty-four?
Retroactive twenty twenty-four?
For twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Judge, if I can specify the timeframe on this.
Yes, ma'am.
And the court has previously approved allowing us to pay off longevity pay when people leave the county employment. And so we do that. So we would continue with the current rate of pay under, under option B up until we pay the overall group at the end of November. So just to specify that. Just the technical.
You got all that, Lee? Any clarification needed?
Okay, Tim. That applies to people that leave as well? Is that what you're saying?
It would not apply to people who leave until the November payment.
Okay.
So it would become effective as of the payroll at the end of November.
Okay. All right.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. With the changes noted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. And again, that does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Let alone to number eight, sixteen, from County Attorney Mr. Poston. Consider and approve plan of action concerning TCEQ's assessment of administrative penalty against the city of Dayton Lake Estates for the operation of a public well in violation of TCEQ laws and regulations.
Greg, didn't you visit them on that?
No. Wait, no.
So to my knowledge, we received a demand letter from TCEQ in the amount of fourteen hundred and twenty dollars that.
Your, your microphone's off. There you go.
In regards to penalties for Dayton Lake Estates operating a public well, and it seems like they are in violation of some ordinances and laws. And we were charged or invoiced for these admin penalties. And so we need to determine next steps and how we're going to move forward.
Okay, let's, let's clarify this. Dayton Lake Estates is a city. It's a municipality, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so they operate their own well.
Okay.
So they can pay their own penalty, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
And it seems that the demand letter, if that's the case, the demand letter should have probably been sent to Dayton Lake Estates.
Okay.
Correct.
Of course, it's sent to us in the first place.
Is this on the executive session?
It is not.
It is not.
Looks like it is to me.
Is it?
Oh, it is. Yes, it is.
I will give you the information. I have an executive session.
Okay, perfect.
I think I'll make some of this clear.
Okay, great.
Okay, we're gonna pass on this for the moment, okay? Number eight, seventeen from Ms. Poston. Consider and approve notice of authorization being sent to certain property owners along County Road three thirty-two, authorizing the making of a drain along a public road to drain the person's property pursuant to section twenty-two-five-two-point-one-one-one of the Texas Transportation Code. Karen, you have anything to add to that one?
I don't, Judge. There is an executive session item listed on this as well, if y'all would like to discuss this in executive session.
Now that being all noted, I believe we've reached the end.
Make a motion to go on the executive session.
Motion.
Yeah, I can say.
Leon, you said, you have anything?
A second.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to move into executive session this time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote to move. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. It's now ten, no, nine. I'll get it right here in a minute. Nine fifty-three AM, and we are in executive session. Ten oh nine. Okay, well, no. We're out of executive session, back in the regular session. Of course, that executive session was held under the Texas Government Code, sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. And then also five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two-five deliberations regarding contracts being negotiated. That being said, we're going to move on to the first item on the executive session, which was regarding the.
The pipeline.
Pipeline.
Motion to table, I already.
We did. Okay.
Yeah, there's no need to.
No need to worry on that one.
No, it's just a discussion, but it's tabled.
Nor the item number three, which also, we're going to table that until we have Commissioner Whitmire present. So we already did that as well. So the item number two on executive session was consider approve a plan of action concerning TCEQ's assessment administrative penalty against the city of Dayton Lake Estates for the operation of public well in violation of TCEQ laws and regulations. And I believe our inclination is to give the county attorney authority to negotiate with TCEQ at this time, since there is some confusion as to whom their letters and their assessments and their penalties should be aimed towards. Also, clarification of the city's ability either to pay and/or the city Dayton Lake Estates, whether or not it's still a city. I believe I, is that fair enough, Catherine?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bruce, and a second from Leon to give the county attorney authority to negotiate with TCEQ on behalf of the county. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion to adjourn.
We're still, we still got seventeen.
Seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go back. There it is. Number seventeen from Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve notice of authorization being sent to certain property owners along County Road three-three-two, authorizing the making of a drain along a public road to drain the person's property pursuant to sections two-five-two-point-one-one-one of the Texas Transportation Code. Catherine?
We're going to table that.
Make a motion to table.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce to table, second from Leon. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion from Bruce to adjourn, second from Leon. I doubt that there's going to be any discussion on that. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned.